Like to call this meeting to order for the regular session of the Board of Supervisors for August 1st, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Felka?
Here.
Layland?
Here. Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved. Second.
And moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Public comments is item number two. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right. Moving on to years of service awards to employees with 20 or more years of service. Mr. Veder, do you have those?
I do.
Oh.
And we have two today. One is for Mary Leonard of the Sheriff's Department for 35 years of service, also a former Auditor's Office employee, by the way, and Crystal Schmitz of the Health Department for 20 years of service. And Crystal is here today.
Great, thank you.
If I can, I'm just going to introduce Crystal, Caitlin Emrick with Public Health. Crystal has been at the Health Department for, obviously, 20 years, but has served in many roles. She started out as a clerk typist, too. Is that right, Crystal? And has moved through many different programs, including care coordination, informing, I missed one, nutrition program, and currently serves as a program coordinator for our Care For Yourself program for breast and cervical screening and the Iowa Get Screen program for colorectal screening. So we're very appreciative of Crystal and her service.
Thank you. It's so nice to have you attend the meeting, too, to thank you in person. So thank you. Moving on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mrs. Veder.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today, if I can see the right page here, will be $1,037,399.2. And of that, we are paying from the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund, $3,920.75. That is one of our larger bill payments. We are paying for three sheriff's vehicles today, total of about $161,000, sorry. And that's mostly at capital things, so.
Okay, thank you. Everything looks in order and it sounds like, and it's any questions or comments? Then, all right, please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Good morning.
This morning, I wanted to introduce Garrett Reynolds. He is our Engineering Summer Intern. I'll stand up for a minute, Garrett.
Good morning.
He will be a second-year student at Hawkeye Community College, and he started with us in May, and his last day is tentatively Thursday. And I wanted to speak just a few more minutes about our civil engineering interns, as well as our roadside biologist intern. So, as you may recall, this year, we have been very short-handed with our engineering technicians. We've been down one to two of them for most of the year. One of our technicians passed away right after Christmas, and then another technician transferred to the secondary roads department in April. Of course, we've been advertising, we've been looking, we've been working very closely with Human Resources to try and obtain more, you know, backfill these positions. Nationwide, there is a real shortage of civil engineering technicians in this state. In Iowa, only about 40 of them graduate every year from DMAC and Hawkeye Community College. It's a two-year program. So, of course, we need to be creative, and we need to retain and attract new civil engineering technicians. We really like Garrett, and we, he's done a great job for us this summer, and he seems to like us, so we would really like to retain him and work with him so that we can introduce him to some of the tasks that we do in our winter months, and just get to know him better, get him more familiar with what we do at Blackhawk County. I'd like to propose that we retain him at his similar engineering, his same engineering technician wage, as long as he can stay with us. We were hopeful, we are hopeful to keep him through May until graduation from Hawkeye Community College. We've worked really closely with HR to talk about these things, and we think this is a really good, workable solution. Garrett seems to be agreeable to it. We do have money, of course, budgeted for, for engineering technicians in our engineering codes. Then briefly, I would also like to talk about our roadside biologist intern. And we've, we've come to realize that a roadside biologist is a new position, and this is his first summer working for us, full-time. He did, we did employ a summer intern for that position as well, and I introduced him to you, I believe, a week ago, Nathan. We would also like to retain him for another two months. This would really help us continue to spray until it becomes too cold, until there's a hard frost. So we'd like to retain both of these individuals. Nathan, just a couple more months. He would only work for us twice a week. He is finishing up his last semester at the University of Northern Iowa. He's able to work for us for two months, excuse me, two days a week. In working with HR, they tell us that, that really the only thing that is going to change with these two employees interns would be, once we get into the second quarter, we will have to start paying IPRs. They will have to start paying IPRs. They would be eligible to, you know, receive that money back from IPRs if they do not continue employment in an IPRs program. I'm telling you this because we do have money, but technically, when I ask for interns in our budget, we only budget through typically May through August, so I would like to extend these in Garrett's situation, at least through May, and then Nathan's just a few more months. If you have no objections to this, we will proceed. If you'd like me to place this on the agenda as, you know, an item to discuss, I would be more than happy to do that as well.
It sounds great to me.
Yeah, does me as well. I was going to say, I think the fact that we've got money in the budget answers that question, but that we have a solution. So I commend you and HR for working through it and having a solution to retain these individuals while we still look to fill positions.
Thank you.
Quick, before Garrett changes his mind.
Yeah. Tom, did you want to speak to it or have an opinion on it as well? Okay, thank you. Any other project updates from department heads or elected officials?
Morning, Board. Al, U.I.T. Director. I would just like to welcome our GIS Coordinator, Natalie Nunez. She would like to present to you guys, so to get you up to speed of what's been happening in the world of GIS. Nat?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I, along with the IT team, have been working on a data hub for Blackhawk County. We got a lot of requests for data, and there isn't really a place for people to go and get it. So I've been working on this data hub where the public could go and see what we have, download it for themselves, and hopefully this will reduce emails and calls for just the data that is publicly available anyway. This is a test right now, but the general idea is they come to this site, they can scroll down, view by category. There are some files that still need some updates, but we can post what we have right now. And the idea is they click whichever category they want, the thing will start loading, and they can either download or view it online already. They could view their, whatever layers they decide, for example, parcel data, land juice data. They can just download it straight from this data hub. The idea is to have multiple departments collaborate into this site where they can put their shape files, for example, just basically files with geospatial data. You can come, upload it, and update it regularly. We are working with different test portals as well, where different departments can test their data coming in and just make sure it's being updated regularly. An example of this would be if Public Health does decide to have some data they want to share. We have this test dashboard where the public can come and just see what information is available for Blackhawk County. For example, we have here obesity data. The idea is for these dashboards to be informative, concise, and interactive. So lots of things we can do with the data here. It's meant to be, you know, kind of pretty, interactive, and most important, most importantly, just informative for the public. We also have a forms center that I'm working with engineers. The idea is for, an example they asked me to start creating is a near miss reporting form. This form, the idea is for public to come, be able to fill out this form, and input any, anything that they find that they believe should be reported. This survey 123 is something we kind of integrated into our enterprise agreement, so we can pick the location type, you know, pick the type of concern that they have, put any more details, and of course, we can customize this survey. But whoever engineers has the most access to this survey, they will be pulling this, once all the answers are in, they'll be pulling the data, and it already has a geospatial aspect to it, so it's all concise, and it's just meant to be easier for, for everybody. We also have our ATV. Apologies. I had just loaded it. Did it anyway. And then I have also been working on this ATV story map for the public to view. This is still in testing slash production, so the idea is for the public, again, to come here and be able to see this website, so they can just see reference where they are able to go with their ATVs. It's not very clear in the law. We're not, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't interpret the law exactly, but the idea is, again, for it to be interactive, concise, and informative, as clear as possible. We can play around with the different color categorizations, but the idea is, you know, if it's red, you probably shouldn't go there with your ATV. If it's yellow, you should be cautious, maybe check if there's construction, and, you know, maybe it's, it's just not, a little blurry between the lines whether you should or not. And if it's green, of course, should be able to go. But the idea is, currently, I have it separated by township, but anyone can browse on the map as they want, zoom in and zoom out, and take a look at where people, you know, where you should or shouldn't. In addition to this, we also have, let's see, we have here. A different map here. If it would load. Yeah, just look. Let me try that again. There you go. All right, so we also have a different map here, which is meant to be a little bit more interactive. The idea is that everyone can come in, check their township, their, their city, their area, and see whether they can actually go here with their ATVs. Again, just supposed to be kind of neat, kind of interactive, and mostly informative, supposed to be as clear as possible whether they can go in that neighborhood with their ATVs or not. We can customize this map, of course, can add any, any extra information that comes in, do different customizations of what we want it to look like. For example, we could do the 3D mapping, which is mostly updated by open source data, but we also have the ability to upload and update these layers as, as we wish.
Can you just maybe speak while you're doing some of this?
Yes.
What is, how is the content updated? What's the frequency of the update? Is it a manual update? Is it?
Yes, right now, it is manual update. The data we collect is from our own engineers, the assessors, and DOT for some of this road data. The idea for the future is to have it linked so that we can, once they upload or update their data, this map updates as well. And we have been testing some of that with the data hub itself. I have been manually uploading the data when I assessors and everyone does their weekly updates. I upload it to the test hub, and currently, we have three testers who are testing our data hub. No complaints so far, so we are going to start moving forward for the production phase. But right now, everything is just testing, making sure everything's getting uploaded properly, and the testers can access that updated data.
Once the syncing is a little bit more ironed out, do you envision this also moving forward with things like trails? Is that a relatively easy conversion, once the syncing is?
Yes, it, it's technically a separate file. So right now, we have DOT data, but working with engineers to get the actual files for specific parks, county parks, things like that. Not everything is 100% complete data, so that's where the line is a little bit blurry, and we might have to bring in some, some data that we find online, but in general, that's why this map has been a little bit tricky. Not everything is there, not a lot of trails are mapped, so it is something that we will have to work to improve, but for the most part, we can get most of the data in there.
You mentioned like a testing phase and then going into the production. And then are there others that you have following that, or after production is pretty much it?
So in the testing phase, they're basically working with different departments. I am working with engineers as well as the assessors and auditors. We are working on a parcel fabric, which is basically their mapping software that they do for parcels. They are using a third party right now. We are working on setting up a testing environment for their parcels that is integrated in our enterprise agreement, so that we don't have to use a third party anymore. So that, that is taking some time. Production for the data portal itself will be separate from different departments. I would like to slowly integrate different departments as they're ready. I don't want to push everyone to production if they're not quite ready, but we do have the testing portal. The idea is to have the testing portal always, so that they can test their data sharing, their maps, and everything before it gets pushed to actual production. So essentially, tests can be a staging environment, if, you know, that, that fits that exact project.
Well, some of this information not only be on this website, but also like the separate links that people will be able to use. I'm thinking of like a conservation, and when you mentioned the trails, that they would just have the link for that, rather than having people have to go to the site and have to look through it?
Oh, yeah, this is, so this is, this is basically my idea of the site. I do have different, like, partners linked here, but the idea is for this hub site to be linked on our original Blackhawk County site, where they can come to this hub, and then the hub will be the data source for everything. So everything should still be kind of interactive and collaborative for those departments.
But this will live on our domain?
Yes.
Right, for SEO purposes and all that?
Yep, yep. This, it has the safety certificates and everything in the test hub and in the production, so it's, I'm working with IT to make sure that's, that's correct.
Sure, and it can grow to be whatever we want for the mobile, to have that kind of information.
Well, that's great.
Great.
Really good.
How much time has it taken you to get to this point from when you started, too?
It, it depends, I guess, because I worked on different parts of this. The data hub itself didn't take too long, but integrating specifically ATV and UTV roads, we didn't have everything that I wanted to incorporate, so I did have to do some research myself to get it, so it did take a little while. The public dashboard, this didn't take long at all. I asked Erin in Public Health for some data, and I whooped this up in about a day. You know, it took longer to make it look pretty than to actually put the data in here. So it's, it's, it's very quick. All these tools are very quick to integrate and just include, it just, I believe it takes more time to make it look nice than actually have the data on there.
I'm sure it does, but it's actually more appealing and more useful sometimes to the benefit to the consumer. Yeah, but that's great. That's very nice. Thank you for the presentation. I was going to say, it's something, I guess, I totally was unaware of how far you'd taken this and how much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is probably 10, 15% of what we've been working on. Everything is in the backend on making servers and testing, testing programs for our employees to make sure that they're, they're ready for the next software phase, but this is meant to be for the public, consumable, and just, you know, concise data for them to, to be able to see.
And benefits us as a county, definitely, too. Like I said, being able to share that, because I remember Kathy and, Kathy and Mike both making, you know, those kind of statements of what this does for their programs and what it could do, and culverts, and identifying all kinds of things, so.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We, we do have some future plans for the, you know, include more departments and just see how we can collaborate better, and the idea is just more collaboration.
Sure. The more we're exposed to it, the more use, or the more things we identify to, that'd be great, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Al, did you have anything else you wanted to, from your department, to update on, or was that?
Just a small update with the Sheriff's Department. They've started their lobby renovation, so we've just been working with them to get everything temporarily moved. For example, the master control, we had to move across the hall. That was, that was quite a bit of work, but we got it done. Also, we moved the visitation kiosks temporarily down to the courtroom on the first floor, so people can still do their visitations. Other than that, that's just staying busy, everyday stuff. I want to thank Natalie for a good presentation. Appreciate you doing all that work. It was, it's a long time coming, but it's, it's going to be great. It's, it's great for transparency for the county to have all that data, so we get lots of data requests all the time, so it's going to be awesome when we finally have a hub. We're going to say, "Go here, stop bugging me." Just kidding, no. We're, we're proud of the data we're producing, and it's going to be great in a format that everyone can consume.
Yeah, great, thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials that would like to give an update? Anyone on Zoom that would like to give an update? Hearing none, we'll move on to item six, minutes approved for July 25th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Item seven, consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion, unless someone wishes to remove an item for, for discussion.
So moved.
So moved.
Ben moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item eight, contracts and agreements. Resolution that the professional services agreement between Blackhawk County and Corkery Creative LLC for logo design services not to exceed $12,500 be approved, and the chair authorized to sign same as recommended by the Logo Design Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Ben moved and seconded. All in, well, any discussion, comments, questions? Michelle, were you going to, I know there were some changes. You and Mike looked at the contract or reviewed it?
I think he had sent us kind of, what am I trying to call it, a pro forma contract, but the RFP for our project included some different things, so, yeah, we did make changes to that to make it conform to what he proposed, and I think we're, we have a good contract now that summarizes what we want to do.
Super, and he had no problems with it?
No, none whatsoever.
Great, that's great. Super, okay. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item nine, other business. Resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same. To purchase one surveyor pack for a truck bed in the amount of $10,080.58 from Highway Products, White Clay, Oregon.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah, several weeks ago, we purchased a truck for our surveyor. This is a replacement truck. We currently have a survey truck with a, it's outfitted with a box, and it's, has quite a bit of rust. We are going to, in our regular rotation, we will push that truck to one of the outshops, and we, we would like to purchase outfitted new survey truck. We received the truck several weeks ago, and that cost about $43,200. We did budget $60,000 total for this whole, the entire truck and survey package. We have been looking around to see what other surveyors in the area use. We really like what a number of surveyors use. It's just a flat. I sent you some information. I sent you photos of this. It sits lower in the back of a regular three-quarter ton truck. It has a slide-out tray and some, some lift-up compartments on the sides. Fortunately, it is a sole-source item. It's only made by one company. It's sold by various, marketed by other companies, but you have to go to this White Products, or, excuse me, Highway Products in White City, Oregon, to purchase. So we would like to, we are asking to be able to purchase this equipment, this accessory, for $10,080, bringing our total bill to about $53,355 out of our $60,000 budgeted item. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Felka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Thank you. Item B, motion that the personnel requisition for a marketing coordinator, GS 18, full-time, in the Board of Supervisor's office with a start date of January 1st, 2024, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Ben moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think the Amanda sent around the job description. There was a question, sort of talking through timeline, and so I sort of penciled out what I thought made sense to be a reasonable timeline, where bottom 130 days, from opening the application period, conducting interviews, scheduling. those interviews, making offers and allowing for notice, which I think is good for us as this applicant pool is most likely going to be some local candidates. And so just to be good partners with what's most likely the private sector. I think it's a reasonable timeline, about 130 days, sort of best case scenario in order to get this position filled, which has put us to the middle of December, so.
Were there any questions about the job description? This being a, you know, new position to Black Hawk County as kind of, you know, discussed during the budget session. A lot of the information we pulled from similar jobs at other local cities and counties across the state and even across the nation going on to governmentjobs.com and looking at other kind of public relations, marketing, communication type roles. So I'm here to answer any questions about posting it as well as the job description or the pay that we arrived at.
So requesting for the, I was going to say for putting a request, you want to post it immediately is what you're thinking?
It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, today, but, because we'll want to kind of put together, you know, even places that we're going to recruit. And so, but it likely will be posted, you know, here relatively soon and we won't sit on it for, you know, weeks. But, yeah, once we kind of get it loaded into our applicant tracking system, the job description, come up with some assessment questions, that's kind of where the next topic comes about the hiring panel, like kind of the opportunity to meet with those people to discuss about, you know, where to recruit, where to post, kind of things that we're looking for. You know, resume, cover letter is pretty standard, but, but no, I don't necessarily mean I'll post it, you know.
Oh, no, I just meant was that the, what you were asking for to get it posted sooner? I guess the part is why as you're doing it.
Yeah.
Because I think, my question, I think, was probably a little bit misunderstood. My email when I was asking, I said, I know when Amanda sent it about, it was like less than two weeks ago, but about all over a week ago. I haven't had, had the opportunity to review it and wanted to meet with her as well, but, and I haven't talked to any supervisors about it. But my question was more, I was glad to get the job description at the time and, and I think communicated that and thought it gave us a place to start conversation. Whether or not we liked it, didn't like it, wanted to add to it or not, that was really all I was kind of going for. It was just that we had not had any board discussion about the position and as a new position, I thought probably it would require from us a little bit more input than typically we do new to us never having one, but also is it doing what we want it to do and everything that we had? And so it wasn't at all to remove it from the agenda, I think, which maybe you thought I was trying to not do it or swash it in some way, but it was just to say, hey, let's have some dialogue on it, discuss why the position, because I don't know if this was something you gathered, like you said, from different positions and just put in this and the two of you then decided that this met the obligations, I guess, that you were looking for this kind of position. But it was, I guess, just really looking at the board, having input as well and thinking about it, talking about it. Not that we wouldn't or couldn't stay on the same timeline, if you're talking about, but doing those kinds of things. Some of my questions were going to be to you, because I thought we had very little discussion during budget. I think that what we discussed during budget, there was staff that were wanting assistance with social media presence and helping get some of their information out and that type of thing, and they were very willing to, to state that. But I just thought too, since this is a position that we're hoping will assist our staff in maybe many ways, what would that be? Have the staff weighed in on it as, at all? Just things I was thinking of and I wanted to, I'll throw them out here, but it was just, I wanted to know, I guess, what other counties have this type of position, how they use it, you know, how could we use it to our advantage and the best, you know, that we do? Or what things didn't, did or didn't work for them? I don't think there are many that I know of, so I said the more that I could learn about that, the better. I wanted to know, I guess, if our staff had weighed in on this, if we'd asked them any type of an assessment or, you know, information just to like, what could help you with this type of position and make sure that we're hitting those marks in the job description? So it just, things like that, that that's why I was thinking that this was a great place to start and appreciated having it, but it was just like making sure we're doing what we want since we don't want to post a position and then change it as we go or say to someone, sorry, that was in the first round, we'd like to add some things to it now. Just making sure that we've covered all our bases, that it does what we want and as much as we can. Not that they don't all say, you know, and whatever we want to add at the end or that famous line that always says to be, yeah.
All duties as assigned.
As assigned, yeah. And to do that type of thing. So those are just some of the things that, that I guess, and me understanding for certain too, what, what, what your goal is or what our goal should be, I guess, with this position and what it does for us and for the public and for the taxpayers and, and that type of thing. So it was just a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I'd say, I felt like we did have a decent amount of discussion during the budget process. It was a number of weeks where we went over it at multiple points. And, you know, I think the description that's, that's been crafted here, you know, does speak fairly specifically, right, to, you know, promoting the awareness of services, programs, projects, policies and events. I would, I would foresee this position working cross vertically amongst multiple departments to make sure, you know, like Natalie, Natalie's GIS project. If, if we don't strategically ensure that we've got the capacity to get the word out about the service, there is value in us having that type of really consumable data. But if we aren't communicating that it's there and we aren't investing in that, in those communication tools, then we really are doing ourselves a disservice. And I think that a key element of leadership is communication. And so I think this position allows us to increase our, our ability to amplify existing programs and messages, accurately do so, which I think we've seen over the years. Most governments have frankly, a local press presence at most of their meetings and that has dwindled over time as, as news has changed. And this position would be able not only to work cross vertically, but also, you know, communicate those messages and craft those messages so that they're accurate, which is an incredibly important part of governmental communications is the accuracy, making sure that, that those relationships and those messages are crafted and, and distributed in a timely manner. So, yeah, we, I felt like we had sort of talked through a decent amount of sort of the concept of the, the job.
Well, you are correct. We did concept. I think job description and, and details and responsibilities and those types of things and how the, the work is carried out, I think, is where I just thought that was the piece that we would need to go over and be reviewing and that type of thing. So.
Yeah, and I think, and I think this.
In concept, I think it was, yeah, we did, we did discuss.
Yeah, and I think, I think the description as written, you know, spells out the work that this position would fulfill on behalf of the county and.
It was definitely like a combination of, when we looked across, even just within the state of Iowa, there's, Story County has like a community, I think it's like an outreach manager that, so it's not necessarily a marketing coordinator, but that was where we first kind of started. I actually was first drawn to Story County because they had two people on staff that created an employment video and it was one that highlighted, you know, the different roles throughout the county and their whole punchline was be a part of our story. I wish Black Hawk County had a cool tagline like that, but it was just a, kind of came out of, you know, two specific roles. One, a management and kind of a specialist level role, you know, focused on the public awareness and, and outreach efforts to draw interest to Story County. So, you know, we looked at positions out at Waukees, Urbendale, I believe Lynn County has more of a director type level and that was a little bit unique. I think they had a different kind of funding and, and service that they were, but we certainly could provide, you know, the examples are where we kind of sourced our information or the, the job description. We also have the health communication strategist position here. That kind of came out of the health department as a need with COVID. And so even in some of the discussions I've had with Gabby as well as Caitlin and understanding, you know, we had kind of a starting point, I would say. It was a little bit more emphasized on public health, but certainly similar type skills and similar type functions and responsibilities, just more at a countywide level, one that collaborates closely with all the departments. But it is unique in the sense that we haven't had it before. So it's not something that I can pull out of the vault and just completely replicate, so.
Oh, no, that's for certain and that's, yeah, there again, lies why. I just thought maybe discussion would help in all of us understanding what this would, would develop into or what it would be or what it could do for us. So, no, I appreciate the work that's been put into it already, so I do thank you for that. I guess one of the questions I would have also, I know internally, the only other position that probably is similar would be that, not to single out Gabby, but that position and what we've seen that develop into. And as a question, I guess, looking at salary and the GS scale and that type of thing, this is much different or somewhat different than hers apparently. Obviously, we know the health department component isn't going to be involved in this as much. Maybe it still could be, but the difference in the scale, what the things were in this position that are different from what she does that would require that.
So that would be mostly related to the, probably that the health communication strategist is focused primarily on the health department and the initiatives and programs that, so we kind of use, when we were scoring this, it looks at a various amount of factors such as the work characteristics, it looks at the types of reporting that, or types of personal contacts that they would have interactions with. And it's similar to how I think of it, kind of like the board administrative aid as compared to, we had one time a board administrative aid for and it kind of rose to a little bit higher level for some of the more complex things that they were involved in and that this is really kind of a centralized place where so many departments come through the Board of Supervisors. So seeing that it was just a larger scope of work as well as maybe somewhat, you know, complex areas and understanding if you were to report out on property taxes, for example, and how do we talk about our budget? And not to say that the health department doesn't have their own areas of complex natures to speak on or to share about, but I think the volume and the kind of scope is what rose it to slightly higher than the health communication strategist.
Thank you.
But as for, you know, they don't do necessarily policy administration, but with even like our logo and some of the things that are coming about, it's having that input as to kind of, you know, what that, what kind of image we want to put out there and how we want to communicate with the public from multiple perspectives, I guess, for the different departments, because they do range quite a bit. You know, a marketing initiative for human resources is going to look very different for conservation or for recorders or for law enforcement elections, so it's a very broad scope.
Am I the only ones questions? If everybody else's questions have been answered, that's great. I was going to say, and I apologize that I wasn't able to get with Amanda sooner too, but I guess just, these are specific questions I see in here for forms, various creative service functions such as development of advertising campaigns and visual content. I assume visual content and digital resources and cost effective always, but advertising campaigns, meaning I know the health department did some of their, I don't know that they called them advertising, but I was going to say did campaigns. Similar things to that effect or what type of advertising are you thinking?
I would envision that and certainly conservation, advertising, events.
Events and that type of thing.
Yep, yep. Promotion. I mean, it's not, we're not, I can't, I can't envision a scenario where we're, you know, putting out spreads in magazines, right? It's, it's very specific.
Okay, but promotional, that's, okay. And I guess probably under the general direction of the Board of Supervisors, how do we all see that working or how does, how do you, Amanda's HR, see that working well with, as far as communication, as you said, critical in many areas in ways?
Sure.
That role difficult?
Yep.
As it is for a lot of people to work with five different individuals, but yes, how do you see this rolling out or working?
You know, in some ways, so this, in not being, I guess, a director level and not having any direct reports, this seemed, you know, we had talked about it possibly just coming under HR. We talked about even going to IT at one time, but that felt that it was kind of too a little outside. I mean, our limitation, I guess, I feel that I don't, my area is mostly employee related, but I would, I would very much benefit from, you know, a role like that within our office. So again, just, you know, it will be something kind of similar with, with the board of administrative aid, while that has a direct report of Michelle, not saying that the marketing position reports directly to the finance director, but, you know, that is a little bit of an unknown as to how you guys will navigate that. We talked about the person, you know, generally being definitely somebody that's a self-starter and one that, you know, is very strong in communicating with the board as well as the departments. So, but it's something that when I've looked at other counties and cities, there's usually a communications like director type, or there has been a manager and then a position, you know, beneath that, that may be something to look at in the future. But it will be something that we're kind of exploring to see and kind of open to feedback from the candidate as to, or from, you know, whoever is selected. But I would think with some of Tavis' background, certainly, you know, we've, as directors, have had pretty good communication with the board, so I'm hopeful that we've had some good practice already to be able to, you know, help direct this person. And I see a lot of it that they're going to be working very closely with the departments to support their efforts. You know, certainly if there's something that each of you want to direct or have an update on, that, that's something you can certainly facilitate and work with them on.
I see under work environment and physical demands, it says the position requires moderate exposure to stressful situations. Is that because they respond, report to the board?
I think all of our jobs have moderate, you know, but not necessarily, you know, at the board. We kind of copy these out of different administrative type roles or professional level roles. You know, there can be, with this not being a position that we've had before, but there are going to be deadlines, there's going to be complex areas to understand, to know how you're going to reach out to the public. And even with talking with Gabby and some of the forums that she's joined, it's, you know, it's a lot of pressure to put material out there as a government entity and to make sure that it's, you know, very appropriate, sensitive to a wide range of audiences. So what may sound good on paper might be perceived or received very differently. So I think there will be, and, you know, that's how I kind of see that. But no, it wasn't a specific note to the board.
Not specific, but yeah.
Yeah.
We can read between the lines.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah, I would say so for sure.
I'll just say I'm, I'm most excited for this position because of the, the changing nature of media and it's changed even since I've joined the board. It's hard for the public to know good things that the county is doing right now. I mean, they, it's just not reported either in television or, or print very often. And I think this is going to be, what I've noticed in my, in my other work, that it takes getting something in the newspaper, you really got, you practically send them the whole article if you want it to be published. And, and so, and that, that takes a lot of work and it's going to take a lot of expertise to understand that in all these different departments, but I think it's, I think it's an exciting thing and I do feel comfortable going forward.
I'll have questions, you know, for me for a long time, so I'm not going to ask them today. I just think that, that really is all I was wanting to do. And so like I said, I just think we were posting the position before we'd actually not vetted the position well enough for all of us to say, yep, this is what we want and I see this is how it works. So no offense to those that have worked on it, just.
We have a department head meeting coming up next Wednesday. Certainly, you know, we'll, and I could certainly share the. and I could certainly share the job description out, you know, with the Department Heads. But I don't think the essence of it will change a whole lot, or the, you know, core kind of activities, but it's not, you know, uncommon that sometimes we go back and look at, like, is that what we meant? Or even when someone gets into the role and understanding, but, you know, the main aspect of it is, you know, really just kind of showcasing the county and wide services that we offer, and making all that, so.
No, and that part, yeah, I truly understand, it isn't that, it was just, yeah, making sure we're not changing things documents later, or that people are appreciative of, this is what they want to do, and, and I know marketing people probably would be receptive to us changing some things anyway, as we see things that would improve our, what we want to do for the county, so that wouldn't maybe be a drawback, I just...
No, but, yeah, it, yeah, it's, it's a new one, so it's...
I want to be careful with it, I guess, that was all, so it's fine. We've got agreement on the Board, we're fine anyway, so that's good.
And then the timeline, right, so this, the earliest it would begin, anybody would even be employed is January, like, probably second.
Probably, yeah, probably not the first.
Right, with the holiday and everything, but, yeah.
Timelines being what they are, I guess we know life and work gets in the way, so. That may or may not, you even mentioned it, I think, in your email, it was like, depending on what all happens, that gets changed, but that was our goal, and we want to be as close to it, I think, as possible, but, yeah, okay. So, are we ready to take action on it? I was going to say, has anybody else got any questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Nay.
No. All right, moving on to the item C, Discussion and Possible Board Action to Establish the Hiring Panel for the Selection Process of the Marketing Coordinator Position. Is this, whoever wants to lead this?
Sure, I can just, so we, we're discussing this, you know, some positions does report to the Board of Supervisors, you know, for, like, Director level, level positions, we've done it a couple of different ways, where it's been the entire Board that, you know, interviews candidates and reviews them, or it's just been two Board members that have been sat on a hiring panel, usually with HR and maybe a couple other key, you know, Department Heads. So that's what this discussion is, you know, as to, do we want to establish one now? Doesn't have to be established today, but at least give the Board the opportunity to kind of give their input if they all want to be involved, and to what extent they want to be involved. We certainly will be screening applicants, you know, with the qualifications that we have listed, but it's kind of more that interview piece as well, and...
I think from, from my past experiences, I have preferred when the whole Board has interviewed the candidate, and preferably, preferably they choose a closed session, which they usually have. So, so that'd be my, my preference for the interview, whether there's a need for a panel to do work ahead of that, I'm open to that.
Typically, it's been HR that's done a lot of the, not, not the interviewing so much, we've done that, but the screening, and the applications, and that, helping us with that part of the process. And any of us that wanted to can review, or question, or talk with you about it. Work for everybody or not, or do we have other thoughts on it, Ann?
Doesn't matter to me, I can go either way, I mean, I could go with two people, two persons, two members of the Board being involved in the interview process, or if it's decided all of us are involved, I can make myself available, of course.
And we may have, depending on, you know, I'll keep you all informed, depending on the number of candidates that we receive, you know, if there's, if we're having a hard time narrowing it down to like a top three, and it's more like, you know, there's maybe five, or that may, even you may want to have a small group kind of interview, or we could do phone interviews, things like that, but presenting then, you know, a finalist group, I guess, or semi-finalist group to the Board, so.
I'm kind of with Chris, as far as the opinion of, I like it, that, that since the person is responsible to the whole Board, that the whole Board weighs in on it, but it's certainly not, nobody want, if somebody doesn't want to, or isn't available, then that's kind of their choice too, but... And were you thinking additional members, as in some cases, that would help us? Is that what you're thinking, like, if we wanted to?
If needed, that was, right, I wouldn't want to be, I guess, if it was going to be a smaller panel, which is two Board members and HR, I thought that might be something that you, but even with your closed session, you know, that may be something to discuss as well, if you think, you know, having a kind of objective, or another input from a Department Head level that has a lot of programs and services, and, you know, who kind of already has tried doing social media on their own, so.
Kind of food for thought, I guess, I think, because since there's no one we could call on, I guess it's done it for a county, or someone exactly like us, and doing the same thing we're doing. I don't know if that'd be, but I just thought too, but it's still, if something to be considered for later, I guess, if it, if it doesn't have to be done today.
Right, that's, yeah, we've done that for certain roles, you know, where we've brought in kind of a subject matter expert, I suppose, so that's something that we could discuss as well, but... Just want to get your feedback on, you know, kind of some of your preferences.
So we do, or, you did one that finalize today, or not, or we agreed to just like?
I think we certainly could, I think, to Amanda's point, you know, if we get a ton of qualified applicants, there might be some value in having a smaller committee at least initially review and bring finalists to the Board, but, but I could also, if the Board wants to go the other direction and do low session on five, or eight, or however many, you know, sort of...
We've even done, we've done the authorizations where we can even discuss candidates as, in a closed session. We have done that with the Board of Health, and so we could even, where we get their permission, their authorization to discuss their application materials, and we could do that in a closed session, it's not just the interview limit, you know, only for the closed session, so.
And decide at that time if we need a sub group, or whatever, too, that'd be great.
I think that works.
We'll plan on the, on the Board, for now.
The Board, yeah, it sounds like the Board for now, until we see what kind of applications we get.
We need a motion on that?
I don't know what you really need, the reports to you all, so, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, Resolution to Approve Billy Joe Heath Financial Management Supervisor, Scott Brown Motor Vehicle and Operations Manager, and Ashley Bass Property Tax Supervisor Be Authorized to Conduct Investment and General Office Transactions in the Absence of the Blackhawk County Treasurer, with the Effective Date of August 1, 2023.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
And moved and seconded, Lynda, did you want to say anything? That's pretty self-explanatory, but did you have, okay, all right. If there are no questions for Lynda, please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Item E, Motion to Direct the County Auditor to Advertise for a Public Hearing to be Held at 9:05 on Tuesday, August 15, in the Blackhawk County Courthouse, on the Proposed Ordinance Number 77-281, from a Request Submitted by Jeffrey and Carla Witt at 6721 Waters Road, to Rezone 1.86 Acres From A Agriculture District to AR Agricultural Zoning, Residential District, to Construct One New Single Family Home.
Second.
And moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, Motion to Direct the County Auditor to Advertise for a Public Hearing to be Held at 9:07 on Tuesday, August 15, in the Blackhawk County Courthouse, on the Proposed Ordinance Number 77-282, a Request Submitted by Ruby Carlson at West of 10812 Cedar Wopsey Road, Cedar Falls, to Rezone 2.88 Acres from Agricultural District to Agricultural Residential District, to Construct One New Single Family Home.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10 is the Work Session Discussion, Possible Board Action on the American Rescue Plan Act County Projects. I believe Mr. Trynan has a report, or some things that he wants to update us on. I was going to say, before, before we had that, I was going to say, I believe Rory had, one of the projects, I think we're all eager to hear more on and make some progress on to, and maybe has some others too, but I was going to say, the Health Department obviously is, is one, so I ask him too, to please update us on that, but, thank you.
Good morning, Board, Rory Giving, Facilities Director. First of all, I want to start off by saying, thank you for being patient as, as we look at the Health Department, and, you know, this has been a discussion point for several months, and I know we've had a small group of folks kind of do a behind-the-scenes evaluation of the Pinecrest Facility, primarily looking at what makes sense for this Health Department and the Health Department Clinic. And so, just to kind of take back just a little bit, this small group has met with all the different departments over at the Pinecrest Facility, with really a goal of just making sure that nothing goes unseen or unnoticed with potential ideas of movement throughout the building, whether that means consolidating various departments to, to make room for this Health Department, Health Department Clinic, kind of keeping them together, the various departments, has kind of, has been our goal. We've looked at other locations, we're currently looking at possibly facilities within the area of where the Pinecrest Facility is at. My goal, or my hope is, could possibly even be as soon as next week, I could maybe further expand on, on some of those thoughts or ideas with regards to the Health Department and the clinic. At this point, we've just been gathering information as far as headcounts for, for the various departments. You know, we have one department over there, for an example, County Social Services. They have currently five employees, but they utilize a half of a wing on our fourth floor. And so we look at that as a potential opportunity to maybe relocate, and I don't want to get anybody, you know, anxious at this point, I mean, at this point, we're still just putting these ideas together, but we also have an annex over there that is severely underutilized, obviously that would take a little bit of updating to make that a useful area, but it is, it is there, and it houses currently nine offices, so. That's really been the goal with the smaller group, is to go over and really take a hard look, and start, and start taking those headcounts and placing them, and seeing what makes the most sense. But again, looking at other facilities, looking at the possibility of adding on, all of those items have been taken into consideration, and the goal is to come back to the Board of Supervisors with some, a recommendation. And I realize that timing is of very importance here, because this is a very large project, and, you know, the, the clock is ticking for the ARPA funds, so it is a very high priority project, and something that needs to keep moving forward. So, I just wanted to stress to the Board today that, that, that is happening behind the scenes, we are having conversations with folks that are related to the situation, and again, my hope is possibly as early as next week, or, or the week after, we could come with a, with a plan, and see what the Board's thoughts are on that, so.
Well, and with several plans, I guess, I was going to say, to add to what you're saying, I appreciate what you say too, but we recognize the fact that there was other buildings and options, whether they were renovating other facilities, or whether it was a new building, that the Board needed to have discussion on that, because we were just trying to provide as much information as we could on departments, people, what's going on there currently, to have that information as well, because we knew there were discussions from the Board that needed to kind of lead where we go to next steps. But we wanted to keep, yeah, keep this on track, and get it going as soon as possible, and that... But I'm sure there'll be something else we'll have to go back and find out after. It would be like, oops, we didn't ask that question, or whatever, if there's something from the Board, but it would be great to do it next week, I think, because sooner is better, and we're all wanting to do it sooner, but it, only if it works, you think we can do that, Rory? And I know there's been a lot of information provided from the Health Department, and what their needs are, and how they see space, and that type of thing too, and Caitlin's been very helpful with that, but I said, in looking at what our options are, I know, like you said, there's something, there is one particular question that we're waiting on to hope to bring to the Board, and hopefully would have that by next week.
Yes, absolutely, and, and don't want to get into it at this point, just because I don't want to create undue anxiety, but there is a particular good option that might be out there, that I hope within the next couple of days, we'll get some answers on, that I can, that we can present to the Board as a potential idea, so, absolutely. Yep, and then, I guess, why I'm here, I just wanted to also touch on the Auditors, Elections, and the Treasurers remodel. It dawned on me that I did not express the timeline that was presented to us by Envision Architect when the Board awarded that Professional Services. So I just kind of wanted to go through that. What they noted in their proposal is, we do have four meetings lined up, so the start of this, we hope to have a meeting possibly this week, or the first part of next week would be our kickoff meeting. So the goal is discovery for that meeting, meeting with some key folks in each department, and then the starting, the planning and designing phase, then going into documentation, bid packages, those types of things. And so, the beginning of August here would be that planning and designing part of it. Our goal is by early October, to kind of finalize the concept, and then bring that in front of the Board, then go into the bidding portion of that, with the hope of that starting right around January of 2024, bidding then rolling into construction. So our goal is the very early parts of 2024, to start that construction. So I just wanted to share that with the Board, because I don't think we touched on that when that was approved for Professional Services.
When do we anticipate, you said, construction to begin?
Early, early 2024.
And then, when would be projected to be concluded?
Well, that's going to be somewhat dependent on when we get that design put together, and really get a better handle on how this is with the HVAC-related equipment, how all that plays in. I will tell you, the one thing that I am seeing right now with HVAC-related equipment is unbelievable lead times, and so I'm hopeful that, you know, as we go through this, some of our equipment can be reused, it's just a matter of maybe updating what we currently have, rather than putting all new. So there's some things that I think that are going to definitely impact that, but I believe if we can get started, the beginning of that 2024, obviously our goal is to have that Elections portion of it well in place before the major election in 2024. That, that is our primary goal there. And then also, I know Al, Al had mentioned the jail lobby upgrade. Just wanted to share with the Board that, in working with the Sheriff's Department, we did place two, I'll call them kiosses, for visitations, for folks to come and remotely visit folks that are in, in the jail. And the location that I basically decided on was down on the lower level of the courthouse, in the Court Administration area, there's a small conference room. And the reason that I chose that is, there's two kiosses in there, it's in its own area, it's in a, a room by itself, but more importantly, with the two deputies that we do have down on that first floor, I just thought that that would be the best place to mount the, those kiosses for the visitation, just so we have more, more law enforcement in the area, so. I apologize for not bringing that ahead sooner, but hopefully everybody is okay with that location, and we do not anticipate a large volume of people, there's only going to be two kiosses in there, so only two people at a time, there will be a scheduled place on when those visitations will take place, so, just wanted to share that with you.
If I could just, specifically on the, on the Public Health Building, and maybe, really specifically on the Public Health Building, I can appreciate sort of the sensitive nature and not wanting to cause too much, just uncertainty, right? But I also think there's some value, even if it's individual conversations, again, recognizing, or if it's, if it's a closed, whatever that looks like, I think there is value in, I certainly have the conversation a number of times throughout a week or a month, either with fellow Board members, or, or staff, or community members, about sort of what, what's happening with ARPA, knowing that this is one of the bigger items, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the keys for us, so I think just bringing us into this maybe a little bit before, again, recognizing that we don't want to get too far ahead. again, recognizing that we don't want to get too far ahead publicly, but I also think there's some value in, in just keeping the five of us abreast as to what some of the options are, what some of the movements are. I think there's, there's some value there.
Absolutely. Noted. Yes.
Yeah. And we haven't gone to a level that really would be, yeah, I was going to say, because I think that's what we've all been very cautious of, to make sure that we go back to the board with it. It was just some of that fact collecting or information collecting was taking longer than what we wanted and some good news, like say potentially that we found out too that needed to be disclosed at some point too, just as soon as we could confirm it. So, yeah.
Absolutely. I hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we lead into.
All right. So, I guess I'll pick up where Rory left off. I'd like to thank Rory for, I mean, I don't have anything to add for sheriff's lobby, treasurer's, elections and auditor or the health department renovation. I'd also like to say thank you behalf of the ARPA committee for all the, the work that's going on kind of behind the scenes with regard to the Pine Crest building because it is going to make it so that we're, we're going to end up at the best possible position we could be in before we, before we start breaking down walls over there. Other projects, with regard to the recorders remodel, my understanding is that that's currently in a, in a holding pattern with the pending issue there being, there are, there's digitization project that's going to be going on and that's already been contracted, I believe. But, but those books over there have to be located somewhere else for storage purposes in order for the layout to be changed in the way that's anticipated. That bookroom's going to become part of IT over there. So, that also is an update on the, on the server room project. So, that's also in that same holding pattern. With regard to the health department mobile clinic, I have just signed off on the RFP on that. That will be advertised, I believe, this coming week and/or this week. And they are going to be holding a public hearing on that at the next Board of Health meeting, which will be at the end of August. With regard to the VA shelter, so Rory's been in touch with people about planning that. However, it's, it's sort of being put on hold right now simply because we want to make sure that the location is going to be known. And that depends on some of this evaluation going on over the Pine Crest building. So, while there's work being done as far as what kind of design, you know, and how the RFP will look for that shelter, nothing's going to be finalized until we know where that shelter is going to be located. With regard to the Big Woods Campground WiFi, my understanding is, and Al, you can confirm or deny this, my understanding is we're waiting on some equipment to do what's going to be the final install on that project. But it is up and running right now with undersized equipment. Is that a fair way to put it?
Yeah, I mean, the, the current equipment out there right now is, is doing a good job. I would say the level of equipment is not rated for the longevity of what we're, we're looking for. So, that's, and we still do have long leadout times for that other equipment. So.
All right. Thanks, Al. With regard to the washburn sewer, Michelle's been in touch with, so there's a couple of different aspects of it right now. Number one, we've contracted with Bendela Gardell for the pump panel upgrades. So, that is going on. But there are also some other aspects of that system that need to be evaluated. And I know that Michelle's been in touch with engineer Bill Clausen concerning that because he was the original engineer on that project to help determine what needs to be done there. Moving on, Cedar Valley Nature Trail. So, the board probably recalls that a blessing was given to them to go ahead and they're still within the original $5 million that's been allotted to them by the board. But the engineering that they're undergoing within that $5 million will exceed the actual construction portion of the trail that will be paid for under that $5 million. So, they're, they're looking on into the future toward what was understood to be a second phase. And while they are, they are doing the work on those, on the initial phase. And so, that's a work in progress. The AV system for the boardroom, that was just approved at last week's meeting. I don't know if anybody's drafted an RFP for that yet, but that would be the next, the next stage on that. Other than that, the only item, now I had the health department renovation, but we've talked about that. And so, I think that I have covered everything that is currently in progress. Is there anything anybody else is thinking of or any questions about the, about the projects that have been discussed so far?
What, contract, or Bill Clausen was involved as far as the washroom. Now, what is his role going to be or what is he being asked to do or help with or?
You want to take this one or you want to be?
Sure. No, I will. I, we wanted to consult with him because of his familiarity with the project. Still working out how we would do that going forward. So, just need to decide what route we want to take.
So, someone, you'll come back to us, I guess, later with some options or whatever those conversations lead to and that type of thing.
He was going on vacation at the end of June and hasn't, we haven't reconnected since then. He was supposed to be working on a proposal of what he would do. But we just need to, I need to push that, I guess.
No, sorry. I just was.
No, that's okay. That's just.
Name rang about too.
Yeah, that's just where we are.
I just wondered what it was.
Yeah.
And the RFP that you're talking about for the boardroom, I assume that comes from Al typically? Would that come from Al? Or are you a combination of?
I was, I was actually thinking it might come from Rory as well, but it, I don't know, Al, what would you? Yeah, that, that was kind of, the kind of way I saw that. So, yeah. They both got a little bit on their plates right now.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And I could certainly help with that as well.
So, on timelines, and this is a question, I guess, from the buildings because we don't, like you say, the clinic was one that's all, that's, we want to get moving on just because we thought those timelines keep concerning everyone too. For the auditors and the treasurers and those moves, we think we're in good shape for those moving forward with anything that we've done so far, right? So, we just need to get public health in, in that mix somewhere too.
Exactly. All the, the jail lobby, treasurer's remodel, the elections and auditors remodel, those are, and frankly, a whole lot of stuff for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail is very much being managed and making progress. I think that the recorders remodel is a smaller scale remodel except for to the extent that we're talking about that bookroom and that's, that's something that's still got a, there's some coordination that has to be done. But, but those other projects, you know, they're very much in progress with, I think they're, they're really on, on track for staying well within the timelines that we have. It's the, it's the Pine Crest renovation that's going to be, that, that's the big one. The way I see it. Yep. That's the big one.
Now, the server, when we talk about server and IT could relocate and those types of moves, those are things that could be determined at any time, I guess, correct, Rory? Or like if we decided that we needed to try to work something with the recorders office on the digitization of the books and get the IT moved over and make some other changes, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. I think right now, as far as what's been presented and approved with regards to the server room, we were putting its own, and I don't know if this answers your question or not, but we're putting its own fire suppression system. We're, we're, we're going to actually put up a firewall and create our own, a new server area that is going to be conditioned separately from the rest of the building. Once we get that completed, I think the vision is, is to look at taking IT into that, what's now the recorder's record storage area with the idea of being a little closer to that server room to have better access to that server room, which will then open up obviously the, the existing IT space. And then, where that evolves, you know, that's, that's yet to be determined.
Yeah.
But yeah, so I, that's kind of how I see that progressing. You know, I can vision a, you know, the IT in that recorder's room with a visual to the server room window or what have you to be able to, to really be close to that sensitive equipment and keep it secure. So, I think ultimately, and correct me if I'm wrong, Al, but I think that's ultimately the goal. But the starting point would be to get that server room, which has already been approved, and get that completed and then move on to the next phase.
Yep.
Hopefully, that answered your question.
It did. I was going to say, stay there just a second, please. I was going to say, as for the public health department and that conversation and if it moves, it should be next week, we think, would probably be good for us to do that. That will be, I think, a critical component, I guess, of how quickly and what we do with that as well, correct? And what would be the next step in that? We've got everything approved as far as the Baker Tilly and ARPA, as far as going through that process. So, that is, and it just becomes on us then, what is our next steps, correct? To be sure that we don't have something else we haven't thought about.
Yeah, it does. I think, I think the board has to decide, number one, how do we want Pine Crest to be arranged? And number two, then we're going to have to go through an RFP process for the design services that would be involved there. And that would be the first step. And then, the, the step that comes later, obviously, is the construction once a design is selected. Those are, the, the design itself is going to have to be, you know, a scored proposal where a committee is selected and it, it's going to take some time to get that done. But then, at that point, it's a matter of, of, you know, finding a contractor who can timely complete with, and arrange all the subs and everything that are going to be necessary to complete it according to the design that's been selected and, and get the entire job committed by the end of 2024 and get it done by the end of 2026.
Yeah. We don't need reminding of that. We speak of it every day.
Yeah. I think to, to kind of go back to the original, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the Baker Tilly application that was submitted originally, we extracted that from the facility space needs assessment, which located the, the health department clinic on the first floor where the, where the existing enforcement or environmental officers are located. So, we got through the process of submitting that application. But I believe the outstanding items, if we were to do a 360 and come back to that original design or that original plan, I believe where we left off was comparables.
That's, that's correct. It actually is still pending because the, since this is in excess of a million dollars, it would require a written justification to be completed by a third party that contains a comparison to at least two other comparable options, which could, or could potentially include, you know, a different location or a different type of renovation, you know, there's, there's all, any number of things that it could be compared to. That was in progress when it was determined that we needed to do a more, we needed to dig a little more deeply into this Pine Crest situation. And again, I thank you and others for doing that because it's a, you know, the situation that came, the design that we're operating on from the space assessment, I think made the assumptions that the non-county offices, such as county social services and, and state DHS, you know, they would stay in place right where they're at and that the health department would operate within the space they currently have. And this is a, you know, that we're, we're taking instead a more all encompassing approach that, that looks at every possible option, including all of the other tenants and departments within that building.
Thank you. And that's why I said we want the board's input too for, like you say, for other comps and that type of thing of where we could be considering or looking into further because we are going to need to do that timely. To make sure we are doing some of that. That's all right. I just wanted to make sure we weren't waiting on a Baker Tilly application or something that we could be going forward with and then find out then we need to put something in a pause again.
You know, we could, you know, one thing we could do, you know, as I mentioned, the comparable portion of that, you know, we've got that application to a point where that's the only outstanding item within that. So, if for an example, we come back to that is ultimately the best plan or approach, you know, it probably would be in our best interest to go ahead and get those comps, just to have those available. If that's what ultimately has chosen the original plan that Baker Tilly did, that would help maybe expedite things a little bit. And I do have actually one very good comp and that was extracted from the same space assessment. So, really, that leaves us with the, with needing, you know, by outside agency, one more, if I understand it correctly, one more comparable because they would prefer to have two of them, correct?
They have to have two.
Have to have two.
That's mandated by the, by the regulation. So, the, what we would have to, if we could either have an outside agency come up with those comparables, I've seen that done, or we could, we could feed them. My understanding from prior conversations with Rory is Rory, you, you had wanted to come up with those. You've come up with one. And it really and truly, it, it's something where, you know, you just have to think of different ways of accomplishing the goal. And as long as those ways tend to be less favorable from one or another standpoint, you could typically from an economic standpoint, assuming all of them are accomplishing the same goal. Otherwise, the, the goal, the goal is to get the most economically advantageous option. So, if we're looking at acquiring entirely new space, building new space, those in and of themselves could be two separate alternatives, whether it be buying a different building and renovating it or, or purchasing bare real estate and building it on there, there's two alternatives right there. Now, that's perhaps being a little too simplistic, but that gives you an idea of the way that they are considering things. And the board may recall when the sheriff's department was looking at the evidence facility, how they looked at, one, they looked at acquiring a different building that we don't already own, that's on property that we don't already own. And another thing they looked at was renovating the existing facility. And then, of course, based on those two alternatives, the third option, which was building at the Raymond property, was deemed more financially advantageous. So, this is kind of a similar approach we're taking here.
Yeah. Okay, great. That sounds good. And I was going to say, if there's any particular locations or buildings that any of the supervisors, I guess, think if they would communicate with you, I guess that that would be helpful too, rather than wait or delay anymore. Because that's been part of our concern is just getting the information that we can to everybody and then to look at what buildings meet those needs. But.
And yeah, absolutely. And we've, we've been really keeping a close eye of the downtown area here for any, anything that might pop up that may make sense for this. So, particularly here in the last month because we've had other, other real estate conversations as well. So, we've been really keeping our eye out for potentially comps that we could use or maybe it ends up being a, a comp that everybody is very interested in. So, yeah, we have been keeping our eye out. Unfortunately, nothing has jumped out at us that would meet all the needs. But we, like I said, if I could come back, there is one item out there. It's a, it's a bit of a sensitive one. But if, I really believe that if we can move forward with this, it really opens up some of our options that we can share with, with the board. And I think they would be very good ones. So, if you could bear with us another week, the goal is by next, by the next meeting. But hopefully, that will have some better information for you. So, apologize for being somewhat vague.
No. Well, that was, it was supposed to be good news that you were going to present, no, vague. But yeah.
Yeah.
Rory, when we're doing like that, one more comp ID. And Rory, when we're doing, I've got one more comp idea for you, I wanna run an alternative idea. But I'm sensitive to the fact now that every time I start talking, it seems somebody else gets up and leaves, so.
Apparently I've gone on long enough.
So you'll keep it to yourself, and then let somebody have a question or comments or something too to add? Okay. All right, any reports or information from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should've spoken under Department Heads and Elected Officials, but I, I did wanna kinda follow up on the email that I sent you late last week about the, uh, local option tax election, which we're anticipating will be on the ballot in, uh, November. As you know, uh, our option tax has a sunset on it, and it, for, uh, a number of cycles, it was a five-year sunset, but the last one was changed to ten years, which had the effect of, uh, meaning there were fewer people around that remember what happened last time and how the process goes, and, um, for whatever reason, the, the law on local option tax elections is very specific about different deadlines and, uh, hearings and so forth that need to be held, and it's, it's different from, uh, how standard elections are held, so you have to be very careful. And in the past, the, the ball has gotten rolling earlier in the process than this time, and it's, um, the, the state of things is that, uh, the City of Waterloo, which has more than 50% of the population in the county, has the, um, statutory authority to, uh, start the process, and as I was looking at, um, the process from 10 years ago, they were getting starting that in March, April, May, and now, I think mostly just due to their unfamiliarity, um, they're, they just got started working on it lately, and we've been trying to get information from them so that we could do our part of it in a timely manner, um, and it, it's finally coming around, but we're, we are kind of late, uh, in terms of the deadlines that we need to follow, uh, to get it on the ballot in November. So, as I pointed out in that email, uh, this board is going to need to take action by August 15th, I believe is the date, um, and, and that is contingent on the City of Waterloo taking the action that they've told us they are going to take, I believe, in, um, next week's meeting, uh, early August in, in a case. So, I just want you all to be prepared, you're gonna have to make a number of decisions. Um, it's really up to the board as far as whether there is a sunset, a lot of counties have no sunset, um, you could change it so that there would be no sunset, but some of the cities, um, and yourselves may be, um, sensitive to that as to whether that would make it more difficult to pass the referendum, uh, so, but that's something you need to think about, and you may wanna consult with cities in the county about that. Also, uh, the use of the funds is something that can change, uh, with the new election, and right now you have half of it going to property tax relief and the other for roads and bridges, so I suspect that Kathy Nicholas may have talked to some of you about this, I know she's very concerned about getting this going in a timely manner, um, and continuing the, the funding that, that her department receives from it. So, just wanted to keep that on your radar, and we do need to move quickly when we do have the go-ahead from Waterloo. Other cities in the county need to move quickly as well, and if you have any questions, um, I can try to help answer them, or get answers where needed.
So how, you'll be putting the items on the agenda then, as soon as you have that okay or passed?
Right, we, we will have a bunch of, um, or two or three actions that the board will need to take, um, right away, and then of course, there will be actions that you need to take if and when it passes. I believe you need to establish new ordinance, uh, establishing the tax, uh, because it, um, it expires at the end of, um, 2025, and that may seem like, you know, it's, it's way out there, um, and I'm not entirely sure why, um, City of Waterloo usually does it, um, this early before, you know, a couple of years before it's gonna expire, uh, but if you think about what if the referendum failed, and they would want to have time to, um, put it up again, maybe, you know, word things differently or whatever, um, and then you're running out of time if you have to take it back to the voters the second time, and not have a gap between the taxes that you're, um, getting now and, and what you would get under the new, um, referendum.
Okay. Maybe, I don't know, would it be helpful to have an item on the agenda to have more discussion on this, or, or bots on it? I know this is just like an information update, so, would be helpful, so, if you would mind.
Good idea.
Okay, appreciate that, and you would be very helpful in that as well.
You'd like me to write up an action for the agenda?
Yeah, why not, or, yes, or?
Just for a discussion item for next week?
Yeah, or, I mean, if not, I can certainly put it on too, but whatever.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be fine, requested.
I understand you.
Thank you. That'd be great. Um, I don't know if anybody else had any comments to this, as FYIs, I wanted to mention, um, that, um, obviously, we know all the Oversight Committee, we need to do a couple of things, have a meeting with that group, and also, um, put the Articles of Amendment on our board agenda, I'll try to do that next week, put that on so we can move forward. I'm certain it looks like every community has approved them, except for the City of Cedar Falls, but, um, it still looks like the amendment goes forward, um, as long as there's a majority of the, the individuals on it. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is Tracy Malero, and I'm sure all of you remember that she, um, came to us, and I'm trying to think of who else, Redfern, I can't remember her first name, came to us and did the presentation on the Nader Torium in Cedar Falls, and were, um, made, it was a rather large request at that time, and I know we've kinda put the projects and things in a hold, at least for determining what, if anything, we wanna do in the future for those projects, if that were one, but the, um, reason I thought we would maybe wanna add it to the agenda is just for the discussion and possible board action on the CAT grant, that she'd send information to all of us that they were applying for a CAT grant, and, um, wanted to submit that, I think, to Cedar Falls City Council, um, in September, so she had, even as late as yesterday, I think, followed up with me just to see if she could get on the agenda again in the next couple of weeks, and I think the 15th is maybe what she threw out, and, um, I thought that'd be good for an update on their project, and then if we'd like to make at least some type of, uh, um, designation of funding for the CAT, I know we've done it for other projects, and a very similar in size, I know we did one for Waterloo's Parks recently, I can't even, I don't have the history of what the others were, but if it's something like that, we'd at least like to consider for the CAT grant, if, even if we wanted to do something later, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
If that works, I just didn't wanna surprise everybody with what was the, what was I putting on the agenda, so just, I put that on, okay, for next week, or for the 15th, I think maybe that didn't work for her next week, so. Any other, um, information or reports to, to comment? Okay, all right. Item 12, motion for adjourn.
Moved second.
Moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, I'm waiting for that day, now meeting's adjourned, thank you all.